All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here today this afternoon at the special meeting of the Board of Trustees Blaine County School District Number 61 on this Thursday, September 24th at 4:00 PM at the community campus. We do have a quorum present. We have Trustee Clayton, Trustee Vice Chair Corker, and myself, Trustee Benyon, and we also have, I'm horrible, Trustee Freund. That's one of our new norms is to try to use our titles rather than first names, so I apologize about that. We also have with us our Superintendent, Dr. Holmes. We'd like to welcome our applicants for the Board Member position for Zone Two. We have Ms. Jeannie Bradshaw, Ms. Heather Colvin, Ms. Lori Kaufman, and Ms. Sonia Munoz, and hopefully Ms. Kami Bustos will be joining us shortly. But with that, are there any additions, corrections, modifications, or substitutions to the current agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with the opening remarks, and I'd just like to start off by saying thank you for putting your name out there. Thank you for putting yourselves out there. It's difficult to do. We appreciate you being here, and we'd like to welcome Kami Bustos.
(laughing) I'm family.
Excellent. But I know it's a difficult position to put yourself in, and we really appreciate you doing this. There's very little in life more important than the youth of our valley, and they are our future, so thank you for putting yourselves out there. We'll go ahead and go through. We have some rounds of questions to get kicked off. Our Board Clerk, Ms. Amanda LeChance, will be the one moderating the questions, asking the questions, and we will go ahead and rotate which applicant answers each question first. You'll each have an opportunity to answer each question, but it'll rotate through which one answers first, so not the same person is going first. After the questions, there will be time for follow-up questions from the Board to the candidates, as well from the candidates to the Board if you have any questions of us as Board members also. Then we have a, each of the Board members has a sheet to where we can put our top three candidates, and we'll turn those into Ms. LeChance, and we'll see where that leads us. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Ms. LeChance.
So we'll take a moment and do opening statements from all of our applicants. Scratch off if you'd like to.
Sure. Do you mind if I stand? Make sure I don't drag this across the floor. Well, one of the things that Amanda had asked all of us, I'm sure asked us all the same thing, was to talk about why did we want to be a Board Member and what is our passion? And I thought before, I wrote this down because I didn't want to rattle, because I have a tendency to get away with things, so I wanted to keep it under three minutes, so here we go. I believe that with my background and my experience with the youth, especially in Blaine County School District, that I can have a significant role for this, on the success of the Board. I spent 12 years as a student in Blaine County School District. I spent 30 years, starting in 1975, and graduating my last child in 2005, as a parent of five children. I have six grandchildren in this school district, three in the middle school, two in Haley Elementary, and one in Hemingway. I was employed by the school district for 24 years, first as an administrative assistant in the main office, and then as a media technical support specialist at the Wood River High School. I was a friendly face in the office for seven years, and an administrator of levels, and ISAT testing for 17 years at the high school. I was a PTO President who ran parent forums for the newly formed Blaine County School District way back in 1976, and it was for the special services program that had begun at Blaine County School District at that time. I helped create a Bellevue Elementary Library. The Bellevue Elementary Library didn't have one, and so I went and asked the principal if we, if there was a room somewhere in Bellevue Elementary that we could get a room for books, because we felt like our kids needed to be reading in first grade and kindergarten and so forth, and they found us a room that used to be a workroom, and we did a book drive, and then we got volunteer parents for the first year or two to man that library until the district funded it after that. I coached track, color guard cheerleaders at Wood River High School, and I accompanied the choir for 12 years. I have belonged to the Boy Scouts of America for 39 years. I serve on the Snake River Council Board, and also the Western Region Area Two Board of the Boy Scouts of America. I also served as the Director for Girl State for the State of Idaho, which is sponsored by the American Legion, for three years. To say I love the youth is minimal. I love the youth. My passion comes from my years of association, I'm gonna cry, just gonna warn ya, my passion comes from years of association. Sorry. My children are sitting over here.[327.02][327.02](laughing) There's one there. With the association of the staff, with students in the classroom, in the lunchroom, on the playing field, on bus rides, hundreds of bus rides, driving the bus sometimes, and even the craziness that went on in a very friendly and efficient school office. This Board is the face of education, and they are the guardians of our children. As a Board, there should be, we should have solid goals based on sustainability, measurability, attainability, relevance, and it should be timely. We need to foster goodwill by supporting our administration, faculty, and staff while they strive to give our children a first-class education. And we need to be vigilant in guarding the funding that our taxpayers provide for us, putting each dollar where it can be the most effective, and making sure that we all have a positive effect on our children. I think the most important concerns of the district should be the budget, or the Board should be the budget, the children with special needs, students who need specific intervention and support, students who need curriculum that will not only challenge them while they're in high school, but curriculum that will help them give a step up as they go into higher education, and we need to make sure that our kids are safe. And I just want to remind you all that it's homecoming this week, and we have a game tomorrow night, y'all. Thank you.
Pardon my interruption, just one second. I apologize, I failed to announce. We have Gloria Haroldo Hurst here to interpret, if anyone needs it. Tenemos aquí la señora Gloria Haroldo Hurst para interpretar. Si alguien lo necesita, está ella por detrás. Por favor, dése a ella, y ella le puede ayudar. Thank you, and I apologize. Go ahead, Dennis Bustos.
Okay. So mine is not as comprehensive as her speech, but my name is Kami Bustos. I am the owner of the Sawtooth Agency in Bellevue, and I am here because I believe I would be a valuable member, should I be chosen to be a Board of Trustees member. Valuable input that I could provide is a connection to the Hispanic community, as my office was open with the Hispanic community in mind, because I am bilingual, and as that is a growing part of our population, you know, I believe that that is something important to, you know, address and have a connection with. I also hosted the first annual multicultural business expo as a way to provide more contact with the Hispanic community, and I also think that being a business owner and having knowledge of the financial challenges it takes to own a business would be valuable to the Board, and as the budget comes up, you know, that being a business owner would provide a valuable resource. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Heather Colvin. I've been a resident of the valley for 17 years now. I'm a single mother of two. Over the years, I have coached baseball, I've been on the Board of Directors for Wood River Baseball Softball Association, been on the Board of Directors for Optimus Program, obviously things that my kids are involved in. I've served on the PTSA for the middle school, and I'm currently on the PTSA at the high school. I have been a mentor in the community through Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I volunteered for senior projects and panelists for sophomore projects, personal projects, I guess is what they're calling them now. The reason that I feel that I would be a good member for this Board is that I've watched a lot of changes take place in the school district, the 17 years that I've been here. My oldest son went completely through the school district from kindergarten all the way through graduating, and I have one that is a sophomore right now in the high school. I see a lot of positive changes being made, and I'm very optimistic that more changes will be made, and I have in the past expressed my concerns and frustrations and, you know, and I guess I don't really have a place to vent if I'm not willing to do something about it. And so I'm at a point in my life where I feel that I am able to devote the time and energy that it would take to be on the Board, and I'd like to try to make some positive changes happen to our school district. I think our kids deserve the best that they can possibly have, and I'd like to try to make that happen.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Board, for giving me this opportunity to interview for this Zone Two position. I put together a couple of opening statements in the last couple of weeks. Last night, when I was trying to meld them together, I thought, no, no. So I'm gonna go back to basically an introduction. I know that you know me, but you may not know my history or my work experience, and maybe you could learn something about me through an introduction. So, in any case, excuse me. My name is Lori Kaufman. I was born and raised in Lincoln, Nebraska, and moved to Haley 21 years ago. After attending the University of Nebraska, and I became a rabid Nebraska football fan, I began my career at the University of Nebraska Medical Center and worked as a clinical assistant for eight staff physicians. I continued to work in the medical management field for the next 20-plus years, mostly in the Seattle area. After my family moved to Haley, I worked at Power Engineers as an administrative assistant for 10 years, and then became Clerk of the Board of Trustees for the Blaine County School District in 2008. Our daughter attended Blaine County School District schools from second grade through her graduation from Wood River High School. After graduating from Boise State University, she is currently pursuing a Master of Fine Arts degree at Rutgers University in New Jersey. I retired from my Board Clerk position in July of this year, and now have the time and energy to fully give back to the kids of Blaine County. I have benefited greatly from my seven years of Board Clerk experience. I am thoroughly versed in Board operations and have established excellent working relationships with current and former trustees, district employees and administration, the Idaho School Boards Association, and patrons of Blaine County. When working as Board Clerk, every day I tried to contribute as I could to the well-being of all students in the district. I think my background and vast work experience in diverse fields has well-prepared me to serve as the Board of Trustees representative for Zone Two. Thank you.
Hello. I have a different microphone, so I don't know if you guys can hear me. Do you want to bring it up a little bit? That might help. There you go.
Hello. My name is Sonia Munoz. I decided to run because of a wonderful experience I had. I've never had to, thankfully, get ahold of the principal over issues or the superintendent, and I had a very great experience and response, and went to a private meeting with my son and his counselor, and I was very elated when I walked out of that meeting, and I was very happy because it allowed me a time to reflect upon what the school district has done for my son. And we have some new faces, but my experience with emailing the superintendent and the principal, the response was quick, and it was very positive, and I felt that I should give back. I looked at the 16-year-old boy that has been built up through athletics and music and academics, and our lives would be completely different if we had not moved to Wood River. And it was my chance to throw my hat in the ring and represent parents, and I don't know if it's a specific group, definitely the Hispanic population. I could bridge a gap there with my background in municipal government. I've worked as a paralegal. I didn't write a huge elaborate speech for anyone, but this is just me, and I wanted to give back. We've, before I forget, I wanted to impress upon you, and you all have probably already experienced this, so it's probably redundant, but as soon as my name was displayed on your website, I was inundated with phone calls and emails and text messages, people that knew my face, just from being part of the community, and it was people that I see every day, or someone who I haven't seen in years, people that I've handed food boxes to or have in turn handed things to me, and it was a beautiful experience. And however this results, I am glad that I was able to experience that, and I thank you all for providing that experience for me, making that possible, I should say. I'm also very glad to see that there are five very competent people wanting to move forward in their child's, or the children in those communities' education. Wood River is a great place, and I would like to give back, and I think I've covered what you need to hear on my introduction.
As Chairman Benyon said, we'll rotate through. We're gonna start with Ms. Bradshaw with her first question, and I'll read you the question and give you a few minutes to respond. Ms. Bradshaw, what are the Board's roles and responsibilities, and of these responsibilities, what do you think is the number-one job?
Well, in a nutshell, their biggest responsibilities, of course, are the budget for the school district and how that, the money is dissipated into the different departments and the schools and programs. Also to set policy and enforce policy within the school district, and they also enforce, whether it's a student or whether it's an employee, that's part of their governing responsibility. They also can hire and fire the superintendent, and make recommendations, of course, to the superintendent with her guidance as well, of the things that the patrons and the parents and the constituents want as members of the school district.
Okay. So, the Board's roles and responsibilities are, of course, the budgets, you know, the number-one thing on everybody's mind lately, and also hiring the superintendent and policy. And of these responsibilities, I think that the number-one is probably hiring the superintendent, because having a strong leader in place definitely, I think, leads the rest of this school district. I mean, and I think that's the same with any job, you know, or any business. As long as you have a strong leader, I think everything could fall into place after that. But I do know that the budget is also important, but I think it always goes back to hiring the superintendent and having a strong leader in place.
I feel that Board responsibility is to make decisions based on facts that are independent of judgment, personal judgment, whether it's hiring the superintendent, whether it's budgets, whether it's the education of our children, whatever it is. The key is to focus on the facts and not bring in your personal opinions. I think that the number-one responsibility is the educational welfare of our children in the district, and yes, the superintendent plays a significant role in that, but there's other key factors into that, but I think that educational welfare is the number-one priority.
The Board has many roles and responsibilities, but I won't go into the ones that I, except for the top three that I think are the most important, and the ladies have basically covered that already. The Board sets policy. You can't really go forward and make decisions about a lot of things without having policy in place, so, to guide you, you know, as you go along to make those decisions. So that's extremely important, to have a good policy, keep reviewing it, and/or making new policy as required or needed. Responsibility to employ the superintendent, and that, again, to Heather's note and Kami, leadership is extremely important, and the superintendent, I believe, works as a partner with the Board, so you can't get more important than that. And then, of course, the money, the budget, the finances. The Board approves the budget, the school district budget annually, but they also have to approve all the financial statements, and I really can't pick the top reason. I think they're equidistant to each other, those three, because I don't think you can have a well-functioning Board of Trustees without those three things in place, and in place well.
Well, answering last, it's kind of repetitive of everything, all of the roles. I think we're aware of what the roles are, but what I think is most important is the furthering improvement in our school system, and I think Wood River is, I'd like to say, the best school district in the state, because they do have a lot of contemporary educational means that they instill in the curriculum. I know that every year there's some, something new, and the kids are very adept to that. Children of the community are number-one, and if we place that first, that's why, that's essentially why we're all here.
Ms. Bustos, what qualities do you possess that would contribute to our Board?
Qualities that I possess would probably be being bilingual and having a strong connection to the Hispanic community. I think since that's a growing part, I think that they do need some representation, and as my business, I interact with the Hispanic community on a daily basis on several occasions. And so I think that I have a strong feel of their concerns, and being able to acknowledge and contribute that to the Board, I think would be helpful, and also to kind of repeat what I had in my opening statement, is being a business owner and having those knowledges of, you know, financial challenges that a business may take on, I think would be, certainly contribute to being able to help with the budget.
The qualities that I feel I possess are that I'm well-connected throughout the community, with parents, students, teachers, administrators, business owners. Living here 17 years and volunteering on different boards and in different capacities, you get to know a lot of people, and so I feel that I have a lot of positive connections in the community. Having served on several different boards, I'm aware of Board struggles and challenges, whether it's, you know, the budget or conflicts among Board members and, you know, having to stay nonjudgmental in making decisions, and you have to do what's best for the greater good, so I feel that I'm aware of that, and I know how to handle that. And I've volunteered in so many different capacities throughout the schools, from grade school, middle school, high school, that I'm aware of what's going on in each one, for the most part. I'm a little out of touch with the grade schools right now, but I have a lot of friends that have kids in the grade school, and I get a lot of feedback from them, so I feel that those are my qualities.
I feel that, as far as qualities, I feel that I'm compassionate when it comes to children and animals, but I think that's a good quality to have if you're on the Board. You hear many comments from people, you attack many issues that have different points of view, and you have to know how to be empathetic with people and understand, try to understand where they're coming from. I'm a good listener. You have to be a good listener when you're on the Board. There is all kinds of conversation and all kinds of points that are made and presentations that are given to the Board. I feel that I listen well, and then following up on the listening, I think that I would ask pointed questions if they're not answered in presentations. I know how to ask questions, and I know how to also research. Research is a big part of hearing presentations or hearing things talked about at the Board is one thing. You also have to do your own research and try to get either supportive or non-supportive facts, depending on the case, and I think I'm good at all of those, so.
I would like to say the quality that I possess is common sense. A lot of times in business, you see, and it's always easier to see it in hindsight, we should have done that, or why did that occur? But I think accountability and hard work, ethics, I've worked in the legal field, and I understand the importance of confidentiality. I learned to be empathetic and sympathetic, the difference between them, trying not to become cynical when you hear the same excuses from clients or vendors or such, and I believe that I have the ability to analyze contracts and explain to them in a manner where it's a basic person, or where you can comprehend it, where it's not just a bunch of legal, I don't know, like a lot of paralese language that people wouldn't ordinarily understand. I'm sure there's more, but I can't think of any.
Well, I feel like I'm a strong leader. I've had lots of opportunities to be a leader of, whether it's a committee, a board, the PTO, or a Boy Scout group, or the American Legion. I'm a life member of the American Legion. I've had lots of opportunities to serve in both the local and state level, but I've also, I forgot to tell you this earlier, but I had a really great opportunity to be in 1988, the first committee for a senior bash, and we just kind of set the pace for what that was gonna be, and you know what a giant it is today. I'm data-driven. I worked for so long in ISAT testing, but that was very important to me, and what the kids' successes and where they fell short, and which teachers I could go talk to about that individual student, so that we could make sure that that student would pass the next time, and so I'm pretty data-driven. I like to look at their scores. I would always go back into Skyward and look at what they were doing otherwise, so I could see, you know, how I could encourage them without giving things away that you're not supposed to give away as an administrator of an ISAT test. I'm a good communicator. I was, you know, if I had a concern, especially when I worked at the high school, if I had a concern, I wasn't afraid to talk to the principal. I wasn't afraid to talk to the vice principal. I wasn't afraid to go talk to one of the teachers. I'm a team player. Whatever, whatever I'm asked to do, that's what I'm gonna do, and I'll research it and follow through and do what I'm asked to do. Learning the testing system when the No Child Left Behind law came about was a big deal, and we had to go to training every year on the state level to be able to understand the rules and regulations of that test, what we could and couldn't do, and the data, and I felt like it was very important that I was a part of that. It was very rewarding to me. I have a pretty extensive knowledge of the policies. I used to have to sign them as an employee of the school district for 24 years, and the many, the many programs that have been developed over the years in the school program that has enhanced the education for our students. We've grown from a small class of, you know, 150 seniors, or 100 seniors when I graduated from high school to almost 250 today, so the school has grown a great deal, and just coming in this building and seeing, feeling the memories here when I used to work in this building before we moved to the giant next door brings back how rapid this district has grown, and I also feel like this is a world-class school district. It always has been, and it should always be. I can't tell you how many times on some of these boards that I serve outside of this valley, they say, "You are so lucky to live in Blaine County," and I feel like we are so lucky to live in Blaine County, where our parents and our educators and the Board care so much about their children that they spend hours and hours. and the board care so much about their children that they spend hours and hours on their behalf. And I'm willing to do that. Now that I'm retired, I have the time to do that. And I'm a researcher also. I like to get in and read. I've actually gone back 10 months in your board meetings and watched them over again. I've come to a couple, but I've watched them over again and read the minutes several times, just so I can get a feel of some of the struggles or some of the triumphs and some of the successes that you're having here on the board and what you're caring about for our kids. I'm not afraid to try new things. And I just am very, I'm very connected with the community. I have a new neighbor across the street who hasn't lived here very long. And she went downtown with me the other day and she said, every time we went somewhere, somebody knew who I was. And she says, "Do you just know everybody?" And I said, "Well, I used to know a lot more people when the town wasn't so big." But even when I go to Ketchum and I don't live in Ketchum, all I have to tell them is I'm related to the Gorbys and they know who I am. So I just feel like I'm really connected with the community. And that's a big part of what we need to be. I also have the time to go in those schools and visit those schools. And that's, I think that's, as a board member, that's what we need to know. We need to go see the kids. We need to go see what their struggles are, watch them on the playgrounds, go visit their classrooms, and go visit their programs and be there when they're performing and when they're struggling in class, so that we can get a better idea of what some of their needs are firsthand and talk to them. Ask them what they would like to see different, especially on the high school level. Thank you.
Blaine County School District Board of Trustees has met on an average of 43 times per year over the past three years for regular and special meetings. These meetings occasionally take place before 5:00 p.m. Do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position? Please explain.
As I stated before, I've thought about throwing my hat in for a board position in the past, but I, when I sat down and looked at the time and the energy it would take, I didn't have the time and energy to devote to taking on something like this. I am at a place in my life now where I do have the time and the energy and the passion and the commitment and the drive to do that. As far as meetings taking place before 5 o'clock, that's not a problem. I set my own schedule and I'm available whenever I need to be available. I took that into consideration before I threw my hat in the ring. And so I don't see any problem with meeting 43 times or more throughout the year.
And as long as the meetings are after 9 o'clock in the morning, I'm good. I'll be there. And I have the energy.
I was not aware of the, I thought it was one meeting a month. So I would have to rearrange my schedule, but I think it is something that would be worth my time.
Sorry, I talk too much, I guess. I'm retired as well, so I have the time. I have the energy and I have the passion that I think it's going to take to be a part of the board. I remember when there were only two board members, or three board members, and one superintendent and a couple of secretaries. And I can't imagine what they must have had to go through. And I appreciate not only this amount of people that have bid for this, but as well the work that you do. And I'm willing to give you all my all and I have the time to do that. And I appreciate having that opportunity.
I do have sufficient time and energy. I am a business owner, so I can make my own hours and maybe close my office early. A lot of my clients are family-based and have children in the school district. And I think that they would be very understanding if I was to have a position on the Board of Trustees, that the importance of that role and what it plays into how it affects their children. So I think that they would definitely be understanding, so. And, you know, as far as the energy to devote to it, yes, I mean, I have four children and they're all in the school district. So my youngest just entered preschool at the Bellevue Elementary. So, you know, yes, I am busy, but, you know, I feel like this is an important role to take on and to be able to contribute to our children's future.
Ms. Kaufman. Is membership on the Board of Trustees compatible with your present position? What are potential conflicts of interest for you in your current situation and how will you handle them?
Well, I already answered the first part of that. I'm retired, so I don't have a position to be in conflict with. As far as potential conflicts of interest, I believe I have none. I'm pretty wide open there as far as an open mind, but I don't have any physical or, you know, any kind of, I don't have people after me for certain things. I don't have what I would call personal agendas. I think that I'm wide open and I just want to serve the best I can with that open mind.
I'm not sure that there is any kind of conflict for me. I work in the private sector. I contract a lot of work. And if there was a potential conflict of interest, I would bring it up. But I believe a conflict of interest would be something, for example, if I owned Idaho Power and they were contracting work for the school district. Unfortunately, I don't have that kind of money. So I believe that I would be able to work at full capacity on the board. Thank you.
I as well don't have any conflicts, being retired and being able to control the schedule and those types of things. My husband's retired as well. And he was an electrical contractor, so I wouldn't even have that as a conflict, because he's retired as well, as long as far as projects are concerned. But I think beyond that, you know, sometimes you could consider a personal conflict, and I can't think of anything that would be a personal conflict unless it had to do with being dishonest and deceitful. And I'm not going to go there because that's not the kind of person that I am.
I believe that this position is compatible with my current position. I have no conflicts other than if it came to insurance, and I would just recuse myself from that, so, being an insurance agent.
Conflict of interest? Well, I guess if you consider an officer on the PTSA a conflict of interest, then yes. But I would be more than happy to find somebody to fill my position and replace me if I was selected for the board. So that is the only conflict that I see.
And we are on to Ms. Munoz. Please describe your personal experience and involvement with the Blaine County School District public schools. If not in Blaine County School District, what is your experience in other districts?
My experience with Blaine County School District has been amazing. When we first moved here, Antonio was in the third grade and they put the violin in his hands, and he should have been born with it. I have, as a single parent and working multiple jobs, volunteered where I could and I was always well-received. I was never shamed and I was welcomed into the community. I've had nothing but positive experiences through my son and athletics. And they have encouraged him and I feel that it is, it comes back to you. So what I have in my home right now is part of the Blaine County School District and that is my experience. I wish I could have more involvement as, in the PTA, but I had to provide a home for my family. So that is the extent of my experience.
I spent 24 years as a school district employee at Wood River High School. I have an associate degree in education and so that was why I wanted to be there. My five children were very active in school. I had a student body president and a junior class president at the same time. And I was pregnant with my fifth child that year. And so it was kind of a hairy senior year for my oldest son and my junior son. But it was an amazing time. They both played basketball, football. One was a debater and one was in the band. My daughters were in the music department, cheerleaders, dance team, and both of them had music scholarships from, one from BSU and one from CSI. And one was a drama scholarship also from CSI. My youngest son was a drummer here at Wood River, played football and basketball. And so we kept very active as parents in the school district and as an employee in the school district. I just wanted to do everything. And no matter what the principal asked me to do, I would do that. I served on some committees, parent committees that I could serve on to help make decisions for them and especially, like I say, for the senior bash. My grandchildren, I told my children that I would volunteer to be their room mother if they wanted me to be, if they couldn't do that. But none of them have asked me to do that. But I would. I would love to go hang out with my kids now that I'm retired. I would like, I have always liked to go read to the kids at school and I think that's important. I love Blaine County School District. My blood is green. Half of my closet is green and white. And these people are laughing because they know that's true. I wore green and black today because it's homecoming week. And that's how ingrained Blaine County School District is in me. I'm, my email is momawolverine@clocks.net. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I love Blaine County School District.
Well, my personal experience, I just spoke briefly about before, is because I have my children enrolled in school. And, you know, the involvement is just been involved in their daily schoolwork, talking to teachers about concerns. They have been enrolled at Alturas, formerly Woodside Elementary, with Principal Brad. And it's just been an amazing experience, just watching my children grow. And my oldest just entered into middle school. So, you know, just watching that and seeing how receptive the teachers are and how welcoming they are to all students, just furthers my belief that this school district is a very welcoming and great school district compared to other school districts in Idaho that I attended myself, so.
I'm a lot like Jeannie, wanted to be there all the time. You know, the room mom, in the library, helping with the field trips. And didn't miss many opportunities to volunteer on all sorts of levels. But as far as personal involvement regarding my kids and their experience at the school, they have formed through their teachers, you know, a lot of lasting connections and friendships. They've gained role models and mentors, either through teachers or sports programs or coaches especially. You know, I've developed lifelong friendships with a lot of teachers. You know, it's just a very, very good place to be. It's a very good place for our kids to be. It's a good environment for our kids to learn in. And I want to do what I can to pass that on and keep that going for our kids. It's been, I can't, there's no place else I'd rather my kids went to school than Blaine County Schools. And I know a lot of people say, "Oh, there's so many problems, there's so many problems." You know what? There's problems in any school district you go to. And I just, I like the family feel. I like the closeness. I, you know, it's just a great environment for kids. And teachers treat parents with respect and they like to communicate with the parents and, you know, that everybody needs to be engaged. Everybody needs to be involved. And I want to keep that going. I want to be a part of that, so. There you go.
Prior to working at Power Engineers for 10 years, that was my daughter's younger years, I was really, really good to get to every parent-teacher conference. And that is about as far as the involvement that I, that's as much as I could do. I worked for six senior project managers and I was there, believe it or not, early. And I was, and worked late every night. There was just no getting away from my job. So after that, I have all the experience and involvement, I believe, even though I was employed by the district, boy was I, I felt involved. I was involved on many levels. And a lot of that is getting to know the wonderful people that work in the district. I worked with the administration, you know, the principals, teachers. I worked with the maintenance guys. I worked with everyone and got to know them well. And I think I established good working relationships. And I learned so much about the district by having that experience with the people. So I felt involved, even though I was an employee, I was extremely involved. And actually, I loved every minute of it. And I miss it.
Ms. Bradshaw. What is the purpose of public education?
When I was looking at this question, I thought this is about the shortest one on the page and probably the most difficult to put into a few words. But public education is an extension of this community. And for the students, it is their community. It's where they learn to get along. It's where they get their education. It's where they learn to work together. It's where they learn to share. You know that book, I Learned Everything in My Life in Kindergarten? That's true. If you haven't read that book, you should. It's like a real eye-opener that this is where kids learn how to get along and these are the things that they, besides the academic piece. Public education, while it is not free, is a free democracy on the playground and on the playing field, but perhaps not in so much in the classroom, where they need to adhere to some of the rules and regulations of the school district. But for the most part, I think it's a community of students. It's a community where they feel safe. It's a community where they can learn. And again, I can't emphasize more how great this school district is and what a pleasure it is to walk into any classroom any time of the day and be able to see the interaction that's going on between students and between students and teachers. And the opportunities that the school district gives us as parents and grandparents, to be able to be a part of the school district and to volunteer. And that's what I love about Blaine County. I've never lived anywhere else except when I went to college, but that's, this is where I want to be. Everybody says, "Why don't you go south for the winter?" And it's like, because I want to stay home. I like it here. I love it here. I love the people here. And I love the feeling that's here. And it's in the school, too. These kids are very, very special. And we need to make sure that they have a safe community to grow up in, and that's public education.
Well, I believe that the purpose of public education is to give every child the right to an education. And I think that that is extremely important for every child to have from all walks of life, no matter their situation, whether they have a lot of money or if, you know, they're close to being homeless, you know. I think that the purpose of having that right to an education is extremely important and feel that it's a great value. There are so many children out there that need those educations, those rights. And I feel that we do right by our children's, our community, the community children, by giving them access to great teachers and great staffers.
This is the longest one, isn't it? Public education. In reviewing the five-year strategic plan, inspire, engage, educate, empower, I think that hits it right on the head. And I think if you are able to inspire and engage students, that the other two will fall into place. I think the education and the empowerment will fall into place. And I think it's important that administrators recognize and get to know students so that they feel like they are appreciated and noticed, I guess. And so that they want to be there every day instead of going, "Oh, I have to go to school." If it's someplace that they feel like they are valued, then they'll want to be there. And so education is very important to every student, but they have to enjoy it and they have to realize the importance. And they have to feel like even their smallest accomplishments are huge accomplishments. And I think sometimes that gets overlooked and I think we need to focus on, you know, the 4.0 students get recognized all the time and the troublemakers.
the 4.0 students get recognized all the time and the troublemakers get recognized all the time. But in the middle, there's a lot of kids that are working very hard to succeed. And, yeah, they may not be 4.0 students, but their accomplishments are huge to them. And so, I want, I want those students to feel like every, every bit of progress is important. And, and I want administrators to recognize that. Anyway, so I kind of got off track there, but it goes back to the inspire, engage, educate, empower, or, yeah, empower. And I really believe that if you inspire and engage, those other two will come easily.
I think if you ask 20 people in a row what the purpose of public education is, you're going to get 20 answers. I thought a lot about this particular question because it's come up on every appointment situation that I have been through. And it's an important question, but it's, it's very broad spectrum. My personal view has always been that public education is education for all students and offering opportunities to all students within that education. So, when I was trying to put my head around, what are they going to ask us? And what am I going to say? I did a little research to see, just on the internet, what other people are saying, what the purpose of public education is. And, oh, some of them got real verbose and went into all kinds of detail. But I found one, and I wrote it down because it was, it's exactly what I feel, and it's pretty succinct. So, if I can read it to you. I found it on a blogger's post on Education Week, the publication. And I just think he hit the nail on the head. I wish I would have taken his name down to give him the credit. But his quote is, "What is the purpose of a public education? To educate is to prepare and train someone in the necessary skills to have the ability to participate in society as a full citizen." I just thought that was perfect. A full citizen means so many things. You have to know about government. You have to know about not just reading, writing, math, arithmetic, you know, science, you know, your basic subjects. You have to be able to communicate with all different types of people. And anyway, and it, and he had a question to follow that, which made me think a lot, too, because after that quote, he said, "Don't you think that the next logical question is, is public education serving its purpose and for whom?" So, that gets back to education for all kids and opportunities in that education. So, sorry I had to use someone else's quote, but I thought, it hit so hard for me that that is what it is, to be a full citizen. I think that's everything that we can hope to expect.
Well, I'd like to answer questions black and white. The purpose of public education is to prevent ignorance. And I really am impressed with Ms. Bradshaw's take on, or her quote on, "It's not free," because it is not free. Every year, it is quite an expenditure to enroll my son in school, and each year it seems to be increasingly more. But it is completely worth it. Not only is he well-educated, but the social aspect of education is highly important. Just today, I was told that people saw my son as the cheerleader at the Powderpuff Game. And he is not shy, and he, he wore his cheerleading costume. Unfortunately, it didn't fit, but he, he's outgoing and he's able to socialize with other students where if he was, he's an only child, a parent to an only child, you don't have those resources unless you have a great deal of family or neighborhood kids. And for us, that part of public education has been wonderful. But I do believe that educating our, our youth brings the community closer together, and it prevents a lot of ignorant acts. So, that is, that is my take on that.
Ms. Bustos, even though all trustees represent the entire district, what are the concerns, the current concerns of stakeholders in Zone Two?
Well, I would be completely honest. And for me, I would not be familiar with any concerns that stakeholders would have in our current zone, for Zone Two. I do know as a parent, we do see children acting out. There have been acts of crime in the Woodside area that I think concern everybody. And, and I think that does come back to, you know, what's on these kids' plates, you know? And, you know, what are things that we can do as a community to address the issues of children being bored and going out and not taking the best actions, is the way to put it. And I think that that would be one of my concerns, is what we, as a school district, could do to provide more opportunities to these children to behave more responsibly.
I would have to say, well, there's a few different issues, but I would have to say the number one is the presence of drug use in the high school or drug availability in the high school. And I think I don't have a solution on how to solve that problem. I think if we had a solution, it would have been solved by now. But, but I do think, going back to the whole, you know, making, making kids feel valued and appreciated and acknowledged and would make them feel more a part of a group and not possibly partake in those activities, I guess. I mean, I don't know how to explain it, but I, I know that's a concern of many parents. I know that there are kids that are approached on a daily basis in the high school, and I'm just focusing on the high school because that's where my son goes to school right now. I know there are issues or have been issues at the middle school in the past. And so, I think that is the, one of the major concerns for Zone Two. Another one that I hear a lot of people talk about is the Common Core standards and their frustration with the Common Core standards, which I know that's a work in progress and we're all trying to figure it out. Those are the two top ones.
This is a hard one for me because prior to retirement, I heard concerns through, through board meetings and that sort of thing. And I really don't know what the specific concerns of stakeholders in Zone Two are. I'm sure as Heather and others mentioned, I mean, I think all, all of the zones stakeholders are concerned with the drug use in schools and, you know, that, we've, we've got to do something because there's just a high percentage of, of kids that are afflicted with this. But what I would do is, as far as Zone Two, is I'd make myself totally available to Principal Henson at Altris and Principal Biggers at Haley, the two schools in my zone. As I, if I was a board member, I'd make myself available to all the school's principals, but especially those two. I'm over on Altris grounds all the time, walking my dogs around the trails around the school, watching the kids and so forth. I kind of go late afternoon so I don't interrupt them. But I feel that I'm totally immersed in Zone Two, and the people of my, people around me probably have similar concerns, but I don't know exactly what they are. So, I would have to go out and make myself available. I would, I would have to go and visit the schools and say, hey, how you doing? How's everything going? Can I take anything back to the board that you're hearing from parents or, or, you know, for discussion? And go from there. I think it would be something that, I would just have to hit the ground running with open ears.
I believe if we, since we've had Woodside Elementary placed into Zone Two a few years back, the need for paraprofessionals in our schools. And Zone Two runs through to Bellevue School District as well, that portion of the school district as well, and predominantly Hispanic population. And I, and I feel that that would be one of the concerns is adding more staff members to adhere to those numbers. Thank you.
I think one of the things that makes the Woodside area particularly different than the rest of the district on either side, whether it's the south or the north, is that we have a lot of multi, multi-family homes where there's a lot of families living in one building, sharing a yard, sharing a playground and those kinds of things. And they're not homeowners. And it makes it really difficult for them to have the type of lifestyle of a, of a person who dwells in a house by themselves and has all their own yard. And so, that, and that dynamic is very different. And so, I think a lot of those people have to work very, very hard, and a lot of those kids sometimes come home to older siblings or that type of thing after school. And so, I think after-school programs are extremely important. All the way from elementary school to high schools, I think kids need to have something to do after school. If high school students can be involved in sports after school, but not, in sports and activities, but not every school, every student wants to do that. And so, there needs to be other things for them to do. The other thing, of course, is, is money. I know that's a concern for a lot of them because they don't have as much, and the taxes are higher. In this, this area, the cost of living is higher, so that's always an issue. And so, sometimes their lifestyle or their, their personality in their home has a lot of confrontation. And I think that, you know, we all know that that all comes to school with the child. I always said when, when I worked at the school district, that there was a time when I was in a classroom, one time I had the Idaho, the IDLA, the Idaho Digital Learning Academy was in my room, as well as NovaNet, which is a credit recovery class. And so, I'd get some of these students in NovaNet who had failed a class. And this one, one period, I had one student every day, and he was the only student that would come in there. And he was away from school for several days, and I couldn't figure out why. And I kept counting him absent, but I wasn't hearing anything. So, I finally went downstairs to the girls in the office, and I said, "Do you know why this student is absent? Because he's got this much time," he was a senior, "he's got this much time to finish this NovaNet class for him to graduate from high school, and he needs to have this done." And they had, they told me that he had been arrested. And so, when he got back to school and came back to the classroom, I felt like I had a good enough relationship with him to ask him why he'd been arrested. He'd been arrested because he lived alone, he was 17, he didn't have a job, and he, and but he was going to school. But the court's telling that he has to have a job, a place to live, and he has to be in school. And I was just overwhelmed. I thought, here I am in my 50s, and I don't have that kind of pressure. I don't have to make sure that I have a job and that I go to school and that I do my homework, and I don't have any, you know, he didn't have anybody encouraging him to do that. And there's a lot of kids out there like that. Now, I think probably Mr. Elyson over in the other, in the program over by the district offices, that's been created since the student was in high school. And so, some of those kids are being taken care of. But I think there's more of it than, than we realize, and a lot of them live in, in the Woodside area. I think our at-risk kids, our kids who are dabbling in drugs and alcohol, there may be deeper problems than that. And I think we need to make sure that we're going to, and I know that you guys have been addressing a lot of that, but I think we need to address it quickly. And something needs to be done that we can help from the school side without isolating those kids and without making them feel different, because that's already their problem, without, you know, punishing them for what's going on, but rather helping them and helping them rehab so that we can, we can make a significant difference in their lives. This is a very formative time for them, and I think we can play a big part of that. I've always said that school has to kind of fill in where the parents fall short, and we all, none of us are perfect. No, no parent is perfect and no, no staff member is perfect, but it takes the whole community to raise a child, and I think that's part of our responsibility as well.
Ms. Colvin, what specific changes do you want to make in the school district policies, programs, or curriculum, and why? Tell us how you would go about making these changes or any other future changes.
I don't have any agendas. I don't have anything that I'm setting out to do. All I want is to advocate for our kids and do what's in the best interest of our kids. That's, that's the only reason that I'm putting in for this, not because I have anything that I want changed now or that we, we would need to work together to, to focus on priorities and, and figure that out. As far as making changes in the future, gather information, gather as much information as I possibly can, as we possibly can, and sit down as a group and discuss it. And we all would have different points of view, obviously, and different opinions and different, and I would welcome hearing everybody's opinions and input and feedback. And I think that's the only way that you can make any informed decision or set any policies, is if everybody has their say in, in how they feel about it or what they view or, or information that they have that, you know, you may not have. So, that's how I would go about it in the future.
I'm very much like Heather and what she said, that I want to, I want to do the same thing that she just said so eloquently. I, I do have, of course, favorite things. I think we all have favorite things in school. I love the academies, and that's personal. I'm happy to say that's where my daughter found her passion, in the Performing Arts Academy. And look, she's still going to school since she graduated in 2007. And that, that passion has not left her. It doesn't go away. So, opportunities we can give kids that they wouldn't ordinarily get in, you know, the usual major topics that you have to cover in school. We have the Culinary Academy and the Construction Academy, Performing Arts. We have absolutely the most wonderful music programs I have ever seen. So, those kind of things where a kid can get a spark from trying something that they wouldn't have the opportunity to do unless he had it in front of him to try, that's kind of my, my biggest thing when it comes to, but that, that's not saying changes, that's just to kind of keep that always in mind, that they need these opportunities to move them forward in different directions. I would like to see a homework policy, but I know they're working on that, the, that's reasonable for all grades, from the little grades all the way up to, through high school. And reasonable is, is whatever the board decides after the committee, you know, puts their ideas out there to them. But I think that's something that's important. I also would love to see some version of the Adolescent Substance Abuse Program come back to the board, whether it's called that or something else. But that doesn't matter. It's what, really what the program would entail to help the kids, to help all the kids, because it's not just the kids that are afflicted by drug problems or other kinds of problems that need to be addressed and these kind of things. But it's, it's how the other, every other kid in this school district looks at what we're doing as a school district to try to help these kids. It reflects on everyone, and I think that's doing the right thing. So, I hopefully, hopefully, something like that comes up where everyone can agree what will work the best. So hopefully, something like that comes up where everyone can agree what will work the best. As far as going about making these changes, watching boards work. And it's none of their faults, but it's kind of a low slogging process to get the information out there, to talk about it, to look at more information, to gather, you know, to work on policies if that's needed and so forth. But that's how you have to do it.
When I first read this question, the first thing that popped in my head was, we need a marching band. Antonio had a game in Fruitland, the varsity team, and I wasn't able to make it. So I watched it. It was streamed online. I have a nephew that also plays in another high school. So I was streaming both games online, watching them. And at halftime, they had this amazing show. And I thought, we're better than them. Why don't we have a marching band? I don't know what would go into that, but we are very fortunate to have a great music program and theater program. My son took theater last year. And I thought, that's not good for college. But it made him happy. And he's well-rounded. College courses also, I've seen, I graduated from Minaco High School. And they have built onto their school so the students can take some prerequisites before they go into college. And I am not familiar with anything where our students can obtain college credits before going. Probably kind of cutting the cost of college their first year. That is just some ideas. And I don't know how we would go about making these changes. But I know that before Mrs. Martin, the orchestra teacher, came on board, we didn't have what we have in our music department. And we didn't win the Music Community Awards. So I would be very interested to be along for the ride to figure out how those could develop. But those would be my ideas. Thank you.
Well, I too don't have any agenda. I like, I would love to see a marching band so we can have one in the wagon day parade. And, but having said that, we partnership a lot with Sun Valley Symphony. And they don't have marching bands. But we, there has to be ways of partnering with this community in other areas to enhance our curriculum as much as we can. And I know our community is always open to that. So that would be something that would be great to look into as we've had the Sun Valley Symphony set the way for us. The other thing is I think it's important that we have a status quo as we go along with education. As a part of working at Wood River High School, there would be changes to the way we did things about every three or four years. And I watched those teachers struggle. And I watched them be frustrated because they would just get going really good with something and then we'd throw them another curve. And I'd like to see a little more support on our side as the board, to the educator's side who've been trained to do these things and to listen to them and to be able to enhance our kids' education through a lot of the recommendations that they have. We have the best educators in Blaine County School District. And I believe that they need to be listened to. As far as programs, I think we have a lot of programs in the school district. And I know that funding can be an issue. And I think that's something that we, you know, that we definitely have to take into consideration as a board and where that money is best spent. And I think it needs to be fairly distributed, not just at Wood River High School, but at Cary High School. When I looked today, when I was going to get ready to come and wish you all well and that you needed to come to the homecoming game at Wood River, I wanted to make sure that Cary's homecoming wasn't tonight also. Their's is later in October, and I'm going to invite you to go to that one as well. Because that's the best little school in the state of Idaho. And it's because they're a part of the Blaine County School District. And I'm very proud to say that they get a really good education there with not very many teachers and not very many kids. But their kids are very, very well-educated. And I think we're lucky that we have that support. And I think we need to continue that. But we need to continue it not just with the two high schools, but with all of the schools and making sure that we're giving to our little kids as much as we're giving to our older kids. And I think it also gives them something to do and something to be proud of. As far as the curriculum is concerned, I think we have a strong curriculum. We do have dual credits, credits from CSI available to our students. A lot of our students take classes here in this building. And they have AP classes that are amazing. I would like to see us align the calendar with those AP classes so that those AP students don't have two weeks of school with nothing to do in those classes. And especially the seniors. But I don't have a personal agenda about any particular thing. I just want to support the things that we have and make them better.
Specific changes that I would want to make would be really pertaining to the budget and making sure that we are spending taxpayers' money wisely. I was watching a webcast and was a little bit disappointed to hear that so much money is being spent on cell phones for some district employees to have access to cell phones to the tune of thousands of dollars. And to me, that did not make sense. And I feel like we need to address certain changes and make sure that we are addressing some of our community members' concerns by just saying, you know, hey, we'll look into it or make sure that we address this at the next meeting. I did not hear that on the webcast that I was watching. But I feel like, you know, making sure that we have some responsible spending going on is the most critical thing that we need to do right now, considering that the budget is looking at a deficit. And I think those are important things to consider. And I also feel like we need to make sure that there are programs that are really incorporating all members of our community in all aspects. I feel like the Blaine County School District is doing a great effort. And I would just maybe like to see a little bit more effort involved or used to really incorporate the Hispanic community. Because that is a growing population. I don't know if I have a correct quote, but you know, if there's 40% enrollment of Hispanic students, I think that we need to really step up and make sure that there's some more programs to really align and make sure that we are really a multicultural community, considering that everybody has a different background.
Ms. Kaufman, describe the process you use to make decisions.
Board, may I tag one more item on the last, number eight, that I just thought of? May I? I'll try to be short about it. While we all want programs, and I was the big advocate for the programs and the opportunities for kids, I think there's a fine line between offering everything that comes up that sounds like a great idea, because, you know, they all are great ideas. But they cost money. And, but I think a bigger concern than that, while it's a concern, is the problem of overtaxing our teachers. Because, boy, oh, boy, are they busy right now with the programs and the educating that they do and the preparation for the next day and so forth. I see them coming over to Altarus at 7:00 to 7:30 in the morning. Maybe some are there earlier than that. And when I'm walking the dogs at 5:30, there are still cars in the parking lot. I wave at them as they, you know, are leaving. But we can overtax our teachers. And they're so good. They work so hard. And they love the kids. And I want to keep them as they are without going too crazy. Okay. I'll give a real short answer to this one. Process used to make decisions. I listen well. I ask questions of the experts in whatever topic we're talking about. And I do my own research. And those three things put together, I usually come up with what I think is a pretty good decision. I also use a lot of common sense. Sonia, you mentioned that. It's a big one. And paying attention to all the things I just listed. You have to sort it out for yourself. And I think I have a good mind for that. So that's how I make decisions.
The way I make decisions is I look at the facts. It's the first thing I do, lay it all out in front of me. And if listening is involved, of course, I listen. There is all kinds of variables, especially with budgets. Every household has to budget. And sometimes the need outweighs the means. And you have to make it work. And it's not especially my most popular thing to put something on a credit card. But if your son only has a size 11 and he's a size 15 shoe, you have to figure out a way to obtain that need and then, you know, somehow adhere to a different budget or figure things out. And I think decision-making takes very many levels. And sometimes we're faced with things that don't have a simple answer. But starting with the facts and looking at things and figuring out what the best possible mode is to proceed, whether it's highly favorable or highly expensive, I believe that I'm able to make those decisions that are tough, just like any household, head of household is able to as well.
I agree with both Lori and the great answers. I'm a logical thinker, and that would be a big one for me. Does it fit in with the things that we're trying to do? Does it apply? Does it have a good objective? And then is it reasonable, you know? And then I would do the research, do some listening, do some talking to some experts, talk to some people that are going to be affected by it, whether it's the parents, whether it's teachers, whether it's administrators, whether it's business people, and do some research that way as well. Maybe ask some people that have been through it before if we're bringing something back or if they've struggled with it before and we know that it's there. Definitely keeping the dollar in mind because everything costs money. And whether, for example, we were talking earlier about music programs and how good the symphony is. And part of that, again, is because of a partnership. And I think that sometimes that might be the way to afford some of the things that we'd like to do. And I definitely agree with Lori about overtaxing the teachers. High school teachers go to work at 7:00 in the morning, and some of them are there until 9:00 o'clock at night. And those are, they're not teaching, they're not doing sports. They're just working on their lessons and the mounds and mounds of papers that they correct. And I just know that as a board, we, one of our most important jobs is to support, not only support the Blaine County School District, but to support the contingency of this community and the constituents that live in it and that we are responsible for the dollars that they spend. And I think that's really important, that we take all that into account by giving our dollars to the best things, the best choices, and being able to do that with a good, logical, and researched and without feeling and personal agenda decisions.
Process that I use to make decisions is listening, being open-minded, I think, is a big part. And being able to look at everything from everybody's side. And there's two sides to every story, sometimes three sides. And I think that you need to, you know, use that process, you know, just listening objectively and knowing that there's two sides. And that you need to look at something from every angle before you put your personal decision into play.
What they all said. Gather as much information as possible. Sometimes think outside the box of who you can gather information from. And then lay out the facts. And both sides, and sometimes three sides, sometimes four sides. But lay out the facts and really analyze what decision is to be made. And everything based on facts. I used to be, in my younger days, I used to make my decisions based on emotion. And that doesn't work well. So as I've gotten older and wiser, yeah, you really just have to go off what's right there in front of you and not other people's opinions and not other people's hearsay and not the cold, hard facts. And common sense.
Ms. Munoz, what significant issues do you see the school district facing in the coming years?
I'll have to be honest that I have heard about a deficit. And it was mentioned on the panel today. I don't know the history, and I wasn't here. I would have to do some extensive research to really know what was all involved in coming to that point. But I believe that I would be up to the challenge to look everything over, working with those business people that we have contracts with, and possibly working towards a solution to head off a bad financial problem for the school district. Because we don't want our children to suffer the repercussions of prior decisions. And that's my answer to that one.
I think it's a very good answer. I would say the same. And I think that's my concern is, of course, the budget and what can affect that. The growth, for example. We don't know what kind of growth we might have down the road in the school district. Technology always creates a big part of our chunk change. And of course, the wages of our teachers and stuff takes the biggest part of our budget. But we need to be able to at least, you know, maintain what we already have. And so as we look at the budget, there may be some other areas that we need to, and to do something different, creative funding differently so that we can make sure we at least maintain what we have and move forward with the things that we need. And hope that our budget will continue to balance as we move forward.
As previously stated, the significant issues would be our budget. I really think that those need to be addressed. As with any business, you want to pay well to keep the best. I've seen this with my husband where, you know, he learned from a prior employer that, you know, when you pay well, you can get top talent. And I think that, you know, the money that is in our county helps provide us with those teachers to compensate and attract the very talented teachers and staff members that we have here today. And I think that, you know, I really do not want to tackle any issues regarding pay for teachers because I do strongly believe in paying well for good employees. So I think that we have to look at other areas of our budget to see what can be trimmed down or eliminated without it being to the expense of our students.
The budget, you know, and how do you put a price on good, quality education? I don't know how, you can't. I mean, this is our children's future that we're talking about here. So how do you address that? Well, yeah, I agree. If you start cutting salaries, then you start losing the best of the best. And we really have some of the best here. And I don't want to lose them. So then, yeah, you either come up with creative funding or you cut corners. And then that gets tricky as well. So the budget is the biggest, the biggest thing as far as providing quality education for our students.
The budget. Obviously, we need to work on that. It's been forecast to us in reporting for the last several years that it was going to come to this point. And the board needs to take critical looks at everything that was just mentioned by this group and balance the budget every year. The second thing that I think is important, I wouldn't call it an issue so much. That sometimes has a negative connotation. But the ongoing implementation of the new strategic plan. That's going to take a lot of good time spent in getting it done. But I love the mission, the goals of the mission. As Heather already mentioned, inspire leads to engagement, leads to being educated because they're so inspired and engaged. And then they're empowered. They're so confident. And it makes them want to go, go, go. it makes them want to go, go, go. So, I think we're on the right footing when it comes to getting started on getting the plan implemented. I want to thank the steering committee people that worked so hard in all the listening sessions, and all of, everyone that contributed to getting that going, but it's still going to be a lot of work going ahead.
Board, do you have any follow-up questions?
Any questions from the board? I'd just like to say thank you for your answers, very insightful, and very thought-provoking, so, thank you very much.
Applicants, we want to give you an opportunity to also follow up with any questions for the board, and we can go in any order.
I have a question. When are the special meetings? I noticed that we do have to be present for a regular meeting every month. If there are special meetings, when do you generally schedule those?
I'll tell you about the 40th meeting, and you scared me as well. I don't know, I don't feel that it's, the commitment is that huge. You have a board meeting every month, and then there's, some special meetings will come up.
And those are on Tuesdays, correct, or?
The regular meetings are on Tuesdays. Generally, it's the second Tuesday of every month.
Second Tuesday?
Special meetings, we've had noontime work sessions that can last anywhere from an hour to, or excuse me, an hour and a half to two and a half hours ballpark. We also have, at various times throughout the year, we try and be flexible around board member schedules for different trainings and work sessions for the board, as well as the retreats that allow us the time to dig down and nail out some goal setting and other things like that. We also, on occasion, one of our responsibilities as board members falls under the judicial roles for student expulsion hearings, and hopefully those are on the decline, but as mentioned, we try to be flexible around board member schedules, whether it's after work or in the evenings to fit those into board member schedules.
And what would you estimate the time to prepare for the meetings, for the monthly meeting?
We get the board packet the Wednesday before the meeting.
Okay.
And then however long it takes each individual board member to go through the board packet, find out all the information they need to do, if they have any follow-up questions with staff, with superintendent above and beyond that. We also have usually one-on-one monthly meetings with the superintendent to kind of go over some things that are going on in the district, as well as, we also have board members serve on committees as of right now. We have the Finance Committee, Wellness Committee, and the Policy Committee that are currently being served, and we have board members serving on those committees.
You're very kind, you give them seven days to, or practically to look over the, and other, other meeting packets, I usually give 24 hours. So, and I had another question, and now I can't think of it. Thank you.
I think with the, sorry. With the monthly meetings, it's not that extensive, because you usually know what the issues are coming into it, and I would say that probably making sure you're connected to the community is a huge part of the job. So that's really, it's not, it's not sit down and study, it's a different part of the job.
Okay. And I remembered my other question. The fiscal year, do you have odd month, or does it end at the end of December?
July 1. Begins July 1.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Board, for the time.
Yeah, thanks for putting yourself out there. Great respect for all of you for doing, I sat in one of those chairs before I got in. It's a process, right?
I'm breathing now. All of us are breathing now.
I think it's a win-win. These are awesome.
Yeah, I do too.
It was worrisome, because we have some times where no one has prepared meetings, and so this was just, it just got, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, and please be patient with us as board members as we kind of go over some things, and as we put down our top three candidates, and we'll get those to Mandela Chance. And just as a reminder to the board and to everyone else, there's another meeting scheduled in here right after us, so we have about 25 minutes to wrap up. No pressure.
I don't want this happening, I don't need it. I don't want these to happen.
And you all understand the process, like we cannot really do that.
Oh.
Own choice without any conversation.
We can't talk about us and this.
She's well-connected, and she's very, you know, it's very knowing. Everybody, all over, everywhere, and all of her experience, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to chalk it up to great ingredients.
No, please, feel free to get up and move around, and I'll be called back to order here in just a few minutes.
I was a little intimidated by you all, so it's, you know.
Did she just put a tiara on her when she walked in?
Yeah. The queen. And the winner is? The queen of the board.
So, I went to the store, and somebody's like, we saw your son, and he was wearing that, and I said, did he wear his t-shirt underneath? No. He is a big, big kid.
Yeah, and what was he wearing?
He was a cheerleader.
Oh, hold on. I love his sense of humor.
He's loud, he's like the only, six foot four, 290 pounds.
Oh, my goodness. And he's a, did you say a junior?
But he loves music.
I love that, that he loves music, you know, it's not, when you think of six foot four and 290 pounds, you think of, oh, God, he'd be a great football player, you know, and that kind of thing.
And he is.
Yeah, I bet he is.
He's good at it, but it wouldn't break apart if he could do it anymore. There's my opening statement.
Oh. Oh, did you not? You were off the top.
I was just like, boo, yeah.
Hey!
Way to go.
Oh, thank you.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting back to order.
Sorry. I consider that a no.
I'd like to thank everybody for sticking around and for your patience, and the votes have been tabulated, and what we did, preferences, excuse me, correct, I, thank you for correcting me. Preferences have been tabulated, and there was a, what we did is, for the first choice on everybody's, we gave them three points, second choice, two points, third choice, one point. We had a three-way tie for, coming out of the points, but there was one person whose name was on every ballot, and that's the tiebreaker, and only one person. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and announce that, that was Ms. Kami Bustos. So, do I?
Wait a minute, went south officially.
We have to have a motion with the board and a vote, roll call vote, so. Do I hear a motion to appoint Kami Bustos as the board member for the Zone 2 vacancy?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote? Trustee Freund?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton?
Aye.
Trustee Corcoran?
Aye.
Trustee Binion?
Aye.
Congratulations, and welcome to the Board of Trustees. Yeah, and once again, I just really would like to thank everybody for putting their names out there, going through this interview process. I know it's nerve-wracking, I know it's time-consuming, and we, I really appreciate your insights, the answers that you gave. It really made us think a lot as a board, so thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. And seeing nothing further on the agenda, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
All set.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at, I can't read the clock behind me, 5:47.